Idea of doing this as well.
Oh, here live on Facebook now. Do you just bring up the agenda? I can bring the agenda up on my phone.
Share my screen. Alright.
There we go. Okay, so minutes approve. We have several meetings minutes to approve. So I'll start off with our February twenty fifth, twenty twenty meeting. I move we approve those minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. I'll call for a vote. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Alright, the February twenty six, twenty twenty budget workshop. I move we approve those minutes. Seconded by Phil Crossman. I'll call for a vote. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
March eighteenth, twenty twenty emergency meeting. I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. I'll call for a vote. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Everyone is up to the March twenty fifth, correct? March twenty fifth, twenty twenty meeting. I move we approve those minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Okay, the May fifth, twenty twenty meeting. I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
And finally, the May twelfth, twenty twenty meeting. I move we approve those minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Okay, a proven sign treasured as warrant number forty seven. So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Um, all those in favor, Eric Gasper any votes yes? Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
See no communications or speakers from the floor. Um, committee and department reports and appointments. Uh, board of committee resignations and appointments. Darlene did send us. Couple hours ago. Look at that. There they are. So Kath- Kathy Warren has moved and resigned from. The planning commission Claire Jackson would like to be appointed.
I move approval.
Um, second.
Okay, and but as a point of um, discussion however, she has turned in papers for selectmen, correct, Andy?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I just, I wasn't sure she'd be allowed to be on the board of selectmen and the planning commission. I wasn't sure if that was one of the ones. Okay, in that case, been moved and seconded, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Uh, Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Okay, um, Pat Lundholm has resigned from the Sea Level Rise Committee. I move we accept her resignation.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
And there's no. Replacement there. Um, Kathy Warren has resigned from the Maine Island Coalition. Gabe McPhail would like to be appointed and Andy Dorr is interested in being an alternate.
Still.
Still. Would I just still be alternate? Um, I move we approve Gabe McPhail as. The member of Maine Island Coalition and Andrew Door as our alternate.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Downtown revitalization revitalization committee. Gwyneth Harvey would like to be appointed. It's like there's three vacancies.
Is that? Yeah, yeah, right.
Big board, big committee. Um, I move we approve Gwyneth Harvey to the downtown revitalization committee.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasper any votes yes? Phil Crossman.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Do we have? Do we have to accept Kath? These resignation on that one too?
Yes, you're. That was for the Maine Island Coalition, correct?
It said, it says in downtown revitalization committee. Two, it says Kathy Warren resigned. Did we already accept her resignation on that one at a different meeting?
Remember now.
Uh, okay, alright, that's fine.
Yeah.
Says resigned beside her name. That's why I was just curious, so.
I think she, I think we already covered that, but.
Yeah, I thought we did that last meeting.
Okay, I couldn't remember which ones we did.
I, I think we did, but.
Well, we'll catch it later if we didn't. Housing committee. Um, I move we appoint Gwyneth Harvey to the housing committee.
Who's, who's being smart as you taken? Looks like they're all full till next month.
Well, that's good catch, Jake. I didn't even notice that. Well, I was.
I mean, I, I mean, is, is someone, is someone getting off that we don't know about?
Is the housing committee limited to five?
It's the number that the board, the board just hit approved.
I don't wanna make it number six.
Can we make her an alternate?
We can.
I don't know if there's a need for an alternate. I just keep it at five or expanded or encourage her to attend as a, just as a regular person, I guess.
For the time being. This is just encourage her to attend for the time being. I think five is a pretty decent committee.
And somebody may not re-up next month, so that I would agree with that.
I agree.
The motion and the second have been withdrawn. So, mm, okay, so that takes care of that. Road commissioner's report. They're still saying, staying busy.
Yeah, I did. I did put something on Facebook yesterday. Um, they are, we have started the calcium chloride. Treatment on the gravel roads. Um, we'll work on that through um, into this week and depending on the weather, maybe into next week. So they had to touch up a couple gravel roads before they could put the treatment down. Um, that's what they're focused on right now. We're also. Planning towards, um, I think towards the end of the week, starting or next week, working on um, tiptoe mountain road. Um, there's a couple culverts that were placed in through there and um, some ditching as well.
Yes, any questions?
When does Carl get done? Next month?
Um, as a. Let me have the, so the fiscal year, yeah, I mean, that's kind of been the, the thought. Um, but we're final, we're wrapping, finalize and talk to him about things.
Okay, I mean, I, I just wasn't sure. I thought you said that he was talking about retiring, so I wasn't sure. I mean. Probably should put something in the, you know, your little report online about thanking him at least. Spent thirty years, right?
Oh, at least, yeah.
I mean, I think we should at least, we should at least recognize when he does get done somehow, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Agreed.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seen done. We will go on to. Report.
They, they had met today. I just thought I'd throw um, some of the highlights in for that. Um, there's been some significant expense in the last couple of uh, weeks. Um, because of the pumps, what's going through the pump stations and what's being flushed in the toilets. Um, so we're working on, there's been a few calls. I know that have gone out through Maine Waters call system. Um, and we'll work on putting stuff on social media and around town as well, but. Um, the bills we've gotten so far have totaled about four thousand dollars, um, because the pumps um, got bind, you know, bound up and. Um, stopped. We had a company come out and on short notice and um, that was just for that, that one. I think since that first, um, call it a clog, I guess, um, they've since pulled the grinder. Out of there and are re, you know, reworking it. They had to put another one in. Um, you know, we haven't even gotten that bill yet, but a lot of that is due to, some of it's due to its age, a lot of it's due to the non-flushables. That get put down into the system. Um, so just calling attention to that.
When you say non-flushables, what do you mean?
So Maine Water. Yeah, I mean, the Swiffer, some of the stuff that says flushable isn't intended to go through grinder pumps in uh, sewer systems. Um, so they're, what will be put out by them or from them and what they share elsewhere is. The only thing that should be going down, the, the toilet is, other than your waste is the, is toilet paper. Um, anything other than that should be thrown away.
And it was pointed out that even the flushable, so-called flushable wipes really should not be flushed.
Yeah, they just don't break down um, in those systems.
Even if they says that the plumbers recommend them, right?
That's right.
Okay.
No, but I'm just gonna add that you wouldn't put anything in your own septic system that is not flushable, you know, recommended. And that would be the same for the sewer system.
Yeah, that's why I'm just wondering why we're having this problem now after twenty years or fifteen years.
Well, I think, I think it's always, it's happened in the past, but. Um, not quite to this degree. And that pump station down at the um, fire hall is the, is the main one. That really pumps to be sewer plant, everything to the sewer plant, so that's a really important one to make sure that it's working properly.
The uh, the UV system we have at the treatment plant um, is one that. Every question fifteen years now. Um, some of its components, the computer components are starting to become obsolete, so we're starting to keep. Um, an eye on that and, you know, may need to budget for, you know, some of that next year or consider contributing to the reserve. Um, capital reserve for that. Um, that whole system. And certainly only increasing that amount for next year. Um, the continued review of the sewer use ordinance in the equivalent user section, um, there was more talk today about that. Um, and trying to make sure that, you know, if change, if changes are coming that, you know, are proposed, that they, you know, still be fair and equitable. Um, you know, but there's been, um, I guess some concern or questions raised about, you know, especially about um, multifamily dwellings. Um, you know, where the currently the ordinance is, I guess, written and interpreted in a way that allows for. Um, a reduction in your equivalent user. Um, and when you start doing that, it, it starts calling in. More regular reviews, you know, annual reviews of, of use and, um, you know, I don't know that it was intended to be set up that way, but if we're starting to see more. Um, apartments put into buildings, um, it's good on the housing front, but the sewer ordinance may need to catch up with, you know, some of those changes as well. The um, other thing I'd share with them, so the, the revenues are on, on the report through April. What we have posted or look like they're down a little bit, but we've actually receded. It's just not in the bookkeeping uh, quite yet. Um, we are in line with what we've collected in the last couple of years. Um, I already mentioned some of the big expenses that, that are on the generator. Um, the, the generator behind the. Public safety building. Um, also had to have some work done this year that wasn't expected. It's, you know, fuel tanks had a hole in it. Uh, rusted out and, you know, becoming a problem, so we had the, just finalizing that now, but had the. Built, had a custom one built, um, that'll be actually outside of the generator. Um, by the time we weighed the cost of. Bringing company out to, to take the generator apart, to remove that tank and then put another one back in it. You know, we've, we figured we could do it, I think for a couple grand cheaper, I believe it was to have a, a custom-built tank. Staying outside of that, um, that generator, so they're finishing that up. Uh, we'll did a lot to prep that site and. Uh, but we tucked in behind the fire station. Other than that, did I cover most of it, Pam?
Yeah, I think so, Andy.
Hey, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, one, the new business, main state ferry service possible, possible, OpaGah request related to the service issues.
This is something that um, brought up at the last meeting. Um, Phil had sent out um, some draft language. For you guys to consider. Um, sounded like Phil, you would talk to Dave Miermott.
Yeah, and he has agreed to be the sponsoring legislator, which is a requirement.
Gotcha. I mean, other than, I mean, what you had had in your letter, it sounded like a lot of that was focused on, um, you know, a lot of what the community was. Concerned with the decision and the decision-making behind the standby, most recent standby procedure, um, the change that takes effect in. On June first, I believe. Um, so I just wasn't sure if going through the, you know, triggering an OpaGah review, you know, if it was. Didn't get a sense, I guess. Be interesting to hear what Dave's perspective on that was if. All the concerns, well, I started outlining it here, all the concerns and things that were brought up over the last couple of years especially. Um, you know, from, at least from this community, um, you know, whether, whether that consideration for a review was limited just to that. Decision or whether um, there was consideration to include all the other things that were more of what had been brought up over the last couple of years.
Well, the, the one I drafted had only to do with. The fact that they went back on their word. However, it's. Uh, it, it, I, I alluded to all these other things at the end, but it's certainly. Certainly they add up. They certainly add up.
Yeah, I think we should include. I mean, you have that one appendix. Maybe you could put another appendix in with just all the other issues that we have. And maybe they'll ask about them at least.
I think it might be a better idea to invite. Inquiries from the uh, agency. If they wanna hear about. Other transgressions, then. They, you, we'd be happy to tell them all about them, but in the meantime.
Yeah, I guess we should.
I personally feel like we ought to focus on this one.
Yeah, cuz it's starting in June and it's gonna be more disruptive than anything else on this. We should probably uh, have them. Focused and see how the outcome is on this, and then we can always request a review about the other things later. I s- I assume you can request. More than one, one review. I mean, it's not once and done.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
So is there a kind of a formal motion? I mean, what Phil had proposed for language is that, do you guys wanna formally decide to send that?
I move we send uh, the request to OpaGah that was drafted by Phil Crossman.
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Pam, I guess. Um, a seconded by Pam Alley. Um, any more discussion?
Do we need to sign it or is Phil just gonna hit send on his email tonight?
That was my intention, but I of course would uh, put it over all names.
Yeah, I think you need to sign. Yeah, no, just hit it, just send it out as quick as you can. I think that would be great.
Alright, so. I'll call for a vote before you do that, Phil, just in case, um, Eric. Eric Gasper any votes yes. Uh, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Alright, you can hit the send button now, Phil.
Okay, there it goes.
Um, report from town manager.
Uh, so I sent that out um, Saturday morning. Um, shared the financial, um, the financial. Audit from eighteen nineteen um, is finally completed. Um, I don't know if there's any question, you know, things that came up in there that um, you need to follow up on, um, that you saw. I think Debbie had a couple of questions that we do just need to clarify with them before it closes, but otherwise, um, it looks pretty good.
Sorry, Andy, did you send out a report?
I thought I did.
It's a, yeah, it's in the board packet.
Oh, it's in the board pack. I'm sorry. I, I, I'm gonna go through that, but I don't anticipate any questions.
I was gonna ask if you could send that in a separate attachment.
Yeah, so I, I tried to send it as a link because um, I think I can send the attachment. I was trying to remember how big it was, if you sent it that way, if it was a shared drive. Um, if you send it as a PDF, I'll send it. I can't remember if it came that way or as a link, um, but I think I included it as a link on the. That lives on the town website at this point. I'll double check.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the server for um, this building, so one of the things um. We need to do is, is replace that. I'm confident or fairly comfortable that with what we have in the Washington School operating budget this year that. Well, we can do that. Um, but it's running on Windows seven still. Um, and one of the things that we'll have to do before we can finalize the upgrade of the new bookkeeping software is also replace it. Um, you know, it's one of the, it's, I think near, nearing its max for storage at this time, and again, being a Windows seven, there's no. Um, uh, patchwork or anything from, from that operating system anymore, so. That's something that we do need to replace. I'm estimating that to be between three and four thousand by the time we buy it and, and get IT to get it set up. Um, as long as you're comfortable with that, um, coming out of the operating budget, um, I can go ahead and get that taken care of.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, the work plan for next year with the community development, um, talked about that a little bit with last week's, um, with the budget workshop. That we had. Um, so I just wanted to follow up on that, um, and talking more with Gabe. Um, I had kind of presented what a, some of the work products that, you know, she had proposed doing with the original budget. And kind of suggested having a plan A and a plan B as well. Um, and so when she came up with kind of a second look at it. If it was only a part-time position, um. You know, what, what we would get, but what, what, what wouldn't we be getting if it was only part-time? Um, and so the possibility of an island fellow. Um, to work alongside and help pick, you know, be able to complete some of those things is something I just wanted to throw out there again. Um, you know, we could do, we could do everything on that list and then, and more um, for less than what. Had been proposed um, last week. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there as a, as a, you know, consideration, you know, if something that we wanted to do, we can go ahead. I can go ahead and start. Um, you know, kind of interviewing candidates that they have already.
Yeah, that. Sounds okay. Anyone, anyone else have any thoughts?
I mean, as long as you can find the right person, we don't want just anyone, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that'd be the first step is, you know, going through the interviews and if there's someone who looks like they would match up with the work plan that we have and. You know, some of the other things that, um, you know, hours-wise that they'd be able to accomplish as well. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of general staff support. I think that could be helpful. We're trying to integrate GIS um, in the other departments next year. Um, you know, there's still some computer um, training and deficiencies. Um, that would be good to have some help with. Um, you know, general support for the committee work that you guys have been seeing. Um, as a necessity for the last couple of years. Um, so there was definitely a lot in that work plan that if it was only, you know, part-time position, that, that things we wouldn't be able to accomplish. So I think, yeah, with the right person, we'll know that first. Um, and so, you know, with the, with the budget that was approved, we'd be able to do. Either option, I guess, either have a full-time position with the benefits or look at a part-time and a fellow.
I mean, I, I feel kind of bad not, the, the full, we're, we're talking about cutting gate, gate back to halftime, right? Or.
We're just talking about it, we're just talking about a position. We're just talking about.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But I mean, I thought, uh, as so was the fellow gonna be able to write grants and everything.
Well, I think that's part of trying to figure out between, you know, a part-time position and a fellow is, you know, who would do what, you know, which position would do what. And I think, you know, the grant writing is one that, you know, we would rely on, you know, presumably whoever has, you know, the experience to do so. Um, and the ability to do it, um, such as a matter of managing, you know, the skillset there. And we do have, of course, you know, Mickhead is a support now through the county taxes, at least through the rest of this calendar year.
Yeah, it sounds okay, you know, as long as you can find, you know, someone.
Right.
Gabe's gonna have to get the feet wet and. You know, not just Gabe you as well.
Alright, well, it sounds like those, at least, you can at least maybe start with at least the interviews and see if, you know, see if there's. Um, you know, potential there.
Yeah. We'll report back to us.
Um, there's a pre-bid meeting for the two capital projects that are out, out for bid right now or soliciting bids for. Um, that's happening the twenty first, I think Thursday. Um, so for anyone that's interested in bidding on that, they are able to attend that, encouraged to attend that meeting. So we'll see what kind of turnout we get for that. It'll kind of give us a good indication of, you know, how many bidders there may be.
Is that gonna be virtual?
It will be virtual. Any, any of the, you know, I'd encourage, and I know we sent off to a couple local contractors that. You know, maybe interested in some of the site work or prep work um, as well, so hoping if there's any local contractors that are interested in. Having a chance to do any parts of those projects or, or the whole project, um, you know, to encourage them to attend that as well, um, and reach out to. Um, you see the town website for that, um, that invitation to bid and, but to reach out to the engineers to. Um, get the information to join that meeting and get the bid documents. Let's see. Library, I was talking to Scott last week and they're um, looking to aim for a June one. Uh, based on the guidance they've got from Maine Library Network, um, in the CDC. Um, looking for a June one for curbside service as we had back in late March, I believe it was. Um, and so just trying to find a way to be able, as we've talked about before, is brought up in a previous meeting, be able to offer uh, books again. Um, you know, we're getting it as a, as a, as curbside, they can, people can call in or email what they're interested in. Um, we'll put information out there as that gets closer, but um, that would be kind of like the next phase for the library. Um, they're coming up with plans still generally at the state level for how to safely consider opening up um, to customers again and. Um, I know one of the ways they were, they were looking at doing that was by reservation or appointment, um, limiting the time that someone might be in there. Um, at one time, limiting where they might be able to go or what they can use, whether it's computers or not. Um, so those, that next phase, if you will, is something that we'll continue to work on, um, Scott and I and. You know, just be in touch, but for the near future, we're looking at, um, trying to get back um, to a curbside service again. Did talk to him about looking at purchasing some um, wifi extenders. I know you, you can get the internet outside of the library right now. I know some people said they can get it as far as the bandstand, um, but I don't know if, they're not terribly expensive, but if we wanted to try and get a better range. Um, it, um, extender, um, you know, maybe people would be able to use it, you know, in the, in the greater, bigger park area, the field area there. Um, for the summer, um, or I guess going forward. Um, if that was something that sounded, that would be a good idea for the. As a resource, we can do that.
Say, I bought one of those extenders and it isn't very expensive, but my, mine from my house works all the way. Halfway down the road and down on the shop and stuff, so they're not very expensive and they do work pretty good.
That sound like something that you'd be supportive of if we were to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be.
I mean, it was only like a couple hundred dollars for, like a. It's like a three, three thousand foot each way, you know, so six thousand foot diameter or whatever it is.
Okay, we can look in, continue to look into that. Um, I remembered at the last meeting where they were, um, yeah, our last full meeting, we had talked about the sheriff's contract, so the, there were a few. Few of the changes in there, um, with only a week before the, their commissioners meeting, um, they're gonna wait until their, their June meeting to take that up. Um, I know the uh, county administrator was out um, that week and so. Um, be able to touch base with him and the sheriff before the commissioners meeting to kind of, uh, be able to go into more detail what the draft changes were. Northern borders application, that's one that we had applied for last year, um, to get a sense for where we, where we might match up or stand. Northern Borders application, that's one that we had applied for last year, um, to get a sense for where we, where we might match up or stand. I mean, that review process, that application is due, um, at the end of this month. Um, and that was one that would help support the downtown project, um, the infrastructure work. Um, that if the total, um, award amount, the highest award amounts for a million dollars, um, and there's a twenty percent local match. Um, so we're gonna ask for a million, um, and, and see how we fare this year. Um, but that one, I know Gabe and Mickhead are working on that right now. We're meeting with them later this week on that. The ferry service you probably seen by now has, they're going to the summer schedule starting Thursday. The Thompson's coming off for three or four weeks, most likely. Um, the Curtis will be filling in in its place. Um, they did also just say the Libby is back in service. Um, we'll make a run to Matinikus this week, which is good because that's a good, a better backup vessel than the transporter if something happens, um. So that was, um, good to hear that fall into place.
When you mean summer schedule, I mean, just six trips a day again?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they'll be back to six round trips a day. Um, still limited passenger counts at this time for the cabins. Just letting folks know of that.
When is the Thompson being taken out?
Thursday.
This Thursday? Okay.
Yep.
Great. That's, that's one I need to go over. Perfect.
Um, let's see. Only, I guess the only thing I just wanted to touch on in here, um, under the COVID nineteen specific stuff. There's been a couple, um, inquiries and requests for the use of the town parking lot, um, crossing next to the, um, old fire hall. Um, one was for the senior possibility of using that for, um, showing the senior video. Um, it's like a drive-in option. Um, there've been people just generally inquiring through the EOC about parades this summer and, and use of the lot for, um, you know, things like the Fourth of July and that kind of stuff, so. Um, you know, what Eric has been on the EOC meetings with us, and one of the things that's coming out tomorrow, if it's on time, is the large group gathering guidelines from the, you know, through DECV. Um, so I kind of suggested to the Bianca and Tanya, working on the graduation planning, to see what that guidance comes out with for large group gatherings, um, or groups of fifty. Um, before you guys would make a decision, I don't know if, you know, if there was more discussion or information that you might want to have or, um, you know, before making a decision like that, you know, the concern I know we had was, um, you know, with one event, if there's more than one event after that, and, you know, I'm just not sure how that gets regulated and forced and, you know, stopping people from gathering outside of the parking area. Um, you know, with the restrictions that are in place at this time. Um, so some of the concerns, the biggest concern we had, I guess, was, you know, others, others wanting to also gather outside of vehicles.
Well, you know, the mandate's pretty clear that you can't have, you know, with the June first to July first, when it goes to fifty people in a public space.
I believe it's potentially June, potentially June first, I believe.
That's the tentative schedule right now.
Right.
So, I mean, the, you know, if that mandate's there, then, you know, you're breaking the law if you have more than fifty people in a one space, so.
Well, I think that's what we were kind of waiting to see what that guidance for large gatherings looks like. There's, there's guidelines for drive-ins as, as businesses, you know, drive-in theaters, um. You know, there was an, an instance a couple of weeks ago where there was a drive-in kind of concert, um, held in a parking area in front of some businesses and um, there were citations issued, issued there for gathering. Um, so I think between that and knowing what's come, supposed to be coming out, um, tomorrow, um, it just kind of suggested that we wait and see what that, what kind of comes out of those things.
I think we need to wait, yeah, until.
We gave any better, clearer guidance or, so would suggest that before making decision on your end.
I think we need to wait, and then we'll also need to have a discussion with a representative from the school. Because likely they're going to be, have to be the ones that are enforcing, you know, everybody following the rules. If we're gonna allow them to have the event, then it's not gonna be up to us per se to tell them how, it's gonna be up to them to enforce.
Right. Um, that was, I had a few other things on the COVID stuff on, on your update, but I don't think there was anything that you haven't already covered.
Yeah. Right, okay, um, reported members. Anyone have anything? Okay, um, hopefully we don't have to have too many more of these meetings like this. Um, I move we adjourn.
You, uh, for your adjourn, do you want to set a date for the final, maybe the final budget workshop?
Yeah, what, can we do that next week, guys? I know we're having a lot of meetings, but, you know, that should be a really quick meeting. We've already gone over it once, it should just now be, uh, you know, just finalizing a couple of things.
It's fine with me.
Okay, one, we got five instead of five thirty? Is that too early? Let's do five.
Tuesday?
Yep, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. In that case, now I move we adjourn.
Second. Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, uh, Eric Gasparini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
And I'll be glad when we don't have to vote this way anymore.
Me too.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
You too. Goodnight, everybody.